Clever one, please rise for the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation given by Councilman Argo.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you bow up if you please? Christian, holy Father, Lord, thank you for the gift of this day. Lord, we thank you for the rain that's falling and the nourishment that it's going to provide. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be in these chambers this evening. We ask, Lord, that you be here with us, that you give us guidance and wisdom, that the decisions we make are in the best interest of the city and the people we serve. Lord, we also ask a special blessing on all of those that are out traveling this evening. Give them safe traveling mercies.
Lord, we also ask a blessing on our men and women around the globe that are in harm's way, wearing the uniform of our country. Lord, give them courage and allow them to continue to represent us well. Lord, we also ask that you be with the 20 men and women who have submitted letters of interest to fill the vacancy of District One of the City Council. Lord, we ask that not only you be with them and their families as they enter into this process, Lord, but we ask that you be with the City Council, that the person that we select will be the best person for the job. And, Lord, we ask that you be with Mayor Gillespie as he continues to help in the matters of the city, continue to give him the wisdom that he needs, Lord, to lead and guide this city. And, Lord, as always, we thank you from your Son Jesus, Lord, to His native brother.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Just a minute. Councilman Wood.
Here.
Councilman Argo.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Councilman Reniger.
Here.
Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Councilman Thang.
Now I'll call this meeting of the Prattville City Council to order. The character trait of the month is persuasiveness, understanding others so I can better communicate with them. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the special meeting, January 14th, and the City Council meeting, January 18th. These were circulated in advance for corrections. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Reniger. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving these two sets of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the minutes are approved. The next item on our agenda is the comments from anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council. This does not have to be limited to an item on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council tonight? Okay. We've...
Mark Rhodes.
Oh, Mr. Rhodes? If you'll come down, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mark Rhodes, 1583 Upper Kingston. I'm a fireman in the fire department here, also the union president of the firemen. Just a couple of things we wanted to bring y'all's attention and see if you can get some help from y'all on this here. Right now, we're working on a project for one of the local citizens, Corporal Brown, that was injured in September in Montgomery. We're right now, several of the firemen are helping with the Montgomery Fire Department and Police Department remodeling his home. We're almost completed with that. We've got about 10 more days to complete. He's expected home at the end of this month, recovering well. That's something that the fundings are coming through, a lot of local businesses through the regions, along with our own personal money, the firemen that are donating money and their time. We're all doing this for our own labor and our own time. We should finish this, like I said, in about a week's time. But what, a second thing that I wanted to talk to you about is that, at the end of that, we're going to start another project funded by the union and the firemen is on Upper Kingston, the park. It is, what we're wanting to do is build a playground for the citizens for kids. Right now, there's just a small park there. You have several soccer fields, but what we're wanting to do is build a playground that is set up, that's around the fire department. We're going to fund this. We're going to raise the money for this. I have spoke with Mayor Gillespie, that, at that time, that he was in his district, and I also spoke with Drew, and they have given us four states to whatever we wanted to do with that. We've got the money at this time to start this. What I'm asking y'all, if there's something that y'all can bring or help or suggestions on that, this will be several stages. We want to do this first class, but we're just trying to give back to the citizens that take care of us every day in this fire department. But I appreciate your time and any suggestions or advice, we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilman Bowles?
Mr. Rhodes, how much money do y'all have or y'all planning on spending on the park?
Right now, we have roughly $2,000. What we're wanting to do right now, we get, they've told us that we pretty much, whatever we want to do space-wise, we want to build the fence and get it, that area built, and then we have three or four items that we're going to purchase to start with, and then we're going to start fundraisers out there throughout this summer.
Okay, thank you.
And I just would, anyone else? I would just commend you and your colleagues for doing both of these activities, which are much appreciated.
We appreciate your time.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move into the mayor's report, and I understand the mayor's a little bit under the weather, so we will cut you some slack if your presentation is short.
Well, thank you, and I hope I can make it through it. And I want to also thank Mr. Rhodes and the fire department for their efforts in that area. He had talked with me earlier, and it's a great project, and hopefully we can see it through to the end. Was want to talk a little bit about our weather, potential Friday night. I understand we might have a possibility of some snow. I don't know if anybody can understand me or not, but I think the likelihood of the snow is going to be very slight, but it is there. I also want to introduce tonight Doug Mosley, our interim finance director. You'll stand up, please, and I think everybody is... Thank you. He's opened himself up to the challenges that we have here, and he's looking forward to it, and I want to congratulate him and thank him for stepping up to the plate. We also have a, let's see, where am I at here? A substitute ordinance or municipal codes for tonight, if you guys can bring that up tonight. I've also been working on the budget, along with the finance committee and the rest of the, in the council, and we should be able to bring that before us by the second meeting in this month, by our next meeting. We also will be having a wastewater department update reports on that. Should have it before us by our next meeting also, and I also want to thank all of our department heads for all their efforts while we've been going through this unusual circumstance of not having a budget before us. I know it's been very time-consuming for them because having to manage their overtime extremely well, and they've been doing that very well. Also, on the 19th, remind everybody about our Mardi Gras parade. I've been having a lot of sponsors come in on that, and that's looking really well. So, we're still on the go for the 19th and the Mardi Gras. We have also contacted our other government agencies here in Prattville, our Board of Education and also the county commissions, and we'll be having our tri-government meeting in the very near future. Danny Chavers is going to be heading that off for us, but that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions for the mayor? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the report from council on special committees. Councilman Wood? Councilman Argo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two reports. One, as the chair of the sanitation and wastewater committee. We have an item tonight on our regular agenda, item number six, a resolution to authorize the purchase and installation of a current selector switch for a backup generator at a cost not to exceed $1,200. Sanitation committee recommends that that be adopted as soon as possible. And then also, members of the council, council president Miller has asked me to assume the responsibilities of then-councilman Gillespie, who was going to look at our council procedures and rules and then recommend some changes. I have some ideas, but I would solicit your input. If you have ideas for making changes to our rules or our procedures, if you would email those to me, I will compile them and bring them back to the council as a comprehensive list at our next meeting. Of course, I know that most of the rules are pretty set out, but one of our citizens, Ms. Finnegan, has recommended several times that, in our resolutions, that we include the amount of money to be expended in the title, which I think is a terrific idea. I'm going to be bringing that forward as well. So, any ideas that you have on rules and procedures, email those to me, I'll compile them and bring them back at our next meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Councilman Reniger?
Nothing at this time.
Councilman Bowles?
I have a few items that I wanted to mention. One is Councilman Thang contacted me earlier, and he started a new job yesterday and is en route, and I think the weather's also contributed to that delay, but he hopefully will be joining us momentarily. The second thing is that the city attorney has requested that we go into an executive session tonight based on possible or potential litigation, and I'm going to be asking for a motion to that effect at the end of our regular agenda. And the third thing that I wanted to bring the council and the audience up to date on is the work of the finance committee. As the mayor mentioned, both he and his staff and the finance committee have been working a lot of hours to try to hammer out a budget, and he presented to us last Thursday actually several versions of that that had different options for our consideration. And we are meeting again tomorrow night to continue that process of working through some of those aspects of the budget, and subsequent to that, we'll be sharing that with the individual councilmen who are not on the finance committee, with the plan to be, after that, to be scheduling a work session, to have the mayor, I think you're planning, you said, to introduce it on the 15th, the second meeting of this month, to introduce it, schedule a work session, and then hopefully, at the first meeting in March, if all things go well, to be able to actually adopt it. And again, that's the timeframe that we're looking at at this point in time. And I just can't tell you how appreciative I am of the fellow members of the finance committee and the other councilmen, as well as the mayor, and the fact that we are making true progress in terms of getting that budget adopted and behind us. The other big item that we've got before us is the vacancy in District One that was created when the mayor moved into his new position, and we have sort of a plan for how we're going to go about doing that. I've shared pieces of that earlier, and would like to continue to point out how the next steps are going to take place. We solicited applications in writing, and the deadline for that, I believe, was Friday at 5:00 p.m., and we ended up with 20 applicants, 20 people that are living in District One and qualified, who basically put their name in the hat. And I'm going to go ahead and say, how many of them are in the audience? Can you raise your hand? Okay, and I can't count quick enough, but that's close to 20. So, we, again, I would echo some of the things Councilman Argo said in his prayer, that we do appreciate the interest, and obviously, there's a lot of interest in that position. What we want to do is to be as equitable and fair in how we treat each individual applicant, and so we've decided that the best way to go about that is to look at having a time that you would, it's not a real interview, that's a back-and-forth question and answer, but we hope to distribute, we plan to distribute a set of questions to you in advance, that you will come before us in a public meeting and have approximately 10 minutes to address. And we are looking at getting those questions out later this week, and the meeting that we would have, when you would come to present to us, is February 8th, next Tuesday. And we're looking at doing that. It's going to be sort of a marathon, but it would start at 6 o'clock, and the, I think we're talking right now in Doster, in the annex room over in Doster, and you would present to us for those 10 minutes, your response to those questions. We think it's best that we assign a time for each of the 20 to come before us, and that no candidates should be in the audience before or after their time slot, so that you don't hear what the other person is presenting to us. We thought about splitting it between two different meetings and having two different days, but that raises some concerns in and of itself. We thought about having a Q and A, but you really compromise the standardized approach where everyone is asked the same questions, and that has some pros and cons, as does every aspect of this. So, at the end of the day, we opted for the best approach to be that we would have sequential presentations, 10 minutes, in response to a standardized set of questions. And again, I hope to have those out by the end of this week. The schedule of the 20 applicants, in terms of the order that you will be presenting to the council, is the order that your application was received by the city clerk. So, that's how we are going to actually schedule you. So, you will get not only the questions later this week, but also a time, a time slot, if you will, that will be yours for next Tuesday at that setting. The public is invited to come and hear those presentations. The nature of the process doesn't allow, you know, doesn't lend itself to having public questions for the candidates, but again, that's kind of an overview of what that process will consist of, and I'll close on that particular piece by saying, again, I'm very gratified that there's so much interest in the position and a lot of qualified candidates. So, with that, we will now move into our regular agenda, and the first item is a consent agenda. Councilman Argo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, we have 16 items for the consent agenda this evening. I'm going to read the titles, and then I'll make a motion to move the consent agenda. Resolution number one is to reappoint Bill Hamburger to the airport authority. Resolution number two is to appoint Connie Bainbridge to the airport authority. Resolution number three is to appoint Bill Marshawn to the airport authority. Resolution number four is to appoint David Goodson to the airport authority. Resolution number five is to reappoint Greg Moats to the commercial development authority. Resolution number six is to reappoint Bob Debusk to the electrical board. Resolution number seven is to reappoint Ernest Goodson to the electrical board. Resolution number eight is to reappoint Bob Thornton to the electrical board. Resolution number nine is to reappoint Alton W. Thrash to the capital improvement cooperative district. Resolution number 10 is to reappoint David Todd Stevens to the capital improvement cooperative district. Resolution number seven is to reappoint Charlie Hill to the capital improvement cooperative district. Resolution number 12 is to reappoint Joe Turner to the Legends Park Improvement District. Resolution number 13 is to reappoint Leo Jamison to the board of zoning adjustment. Resolution 14 to reappoint Thea Langley to the historic preservation commission. Resolution 15 to appoint Clarence P. Bo Evans, Jr. to the historic preservation commission. And resolution number 16 is to reappoint Victor Hunt to the historic preservation commission. Mr. President, I move the consent agenda.
Consent agenda moved by Councilman Argo. Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
Seconded by Councilman Reniger. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the consent agenda is passed. The next item is a resolution to authorize promotion of one firefighter in the fire department to firefighter-medic and one wastewater collection systems operator-trainee in the wastewater department to wastewater collection systems operator. Gentlemen, this item was held from our January 18th meeting. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and resolution number one passes. Item number two is an ordinance to amend.
Dr. Miller.
Ordinance Book 2003, page 3, as amended by ordinance book 2000...
Dr. Miller, excuse me one second.
I'm sorry.
Was there supposed to be an amendment on that previous ordinance?
That was, yes. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Resolution number one, now I'm going to need some help, David, now that we've...
Mr. President.
Councilman Argo?
Mr. President, having voted on the prevailing side, I move to reconsider resolution number one.
Motion is made to reconsider resolution number one by Councilman Argo. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Resolution number one is now properly before us again. Okay? And I will explain, the point here is that the amendment that we need is based on the amount of money that is cited in the resolution, and this amount is, these two amounts are based on the salary alone and not the benefits. And the benefits that are different are those that have a percentage applied to the base, which is basically your FICA and your retirement withholding, correct? But not your health insurance. So, you have figures for that amendment?
You've got the charges, yes, it's in separate...
Is it?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend resolution number one on our regular On line 23, after pay increase, I'd like to insert the words "and" benefits, not to exceed the number $3,329.79, and on line 37 and 38, change the additional rate of $1.38 per hour and benefits, to insert "and" benefits, and not to exceed $3,304.29 in place of $2,850. And then on line 43, change the number $5,722 to $6,634.08. Mr. President, I move those amendments.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. All in favor of the amendment, as read by Councilman Argo, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, and the amended resolution is before us. Is there any discussion on the amended resolution? All in favor of the amended resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the amended resolution is passed. Item number two, ordinance to amend, ordinance book 2003, page 3, as amended by ordinance book 2003, page 5, ordinance book 2010, page 24, the Prattville Environmental Tobacco Smoke Ordinance for food and beverage establishments. This item was also held from our January 18th meeting. Is there any further discussion on this ordinance? All in favor of this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this ordinance passes. Ordinance number three, to adopt and enact a new code for the city of Prattville, a new code of ordinances of the city of Prattville, Alabama, establishing the same, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included therein, providing for the effective date of such code and a penalty for the violation thereof, providing for the manner of amending such code and providing when this ordinance shall become effective. This item was held from our January 18th meeting, and you have before you a substitute ordinance. David, do we have to read that one, the substitute? Okay. I need a motion to introduce the substitute ordinance.
No move.
Moved by Councilman Reniger. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo.
Just read from the substitute.
The title?
Title.
Okay. Title is to adopt and enact a new code for the city of Prattville, Alabama, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included therein, providing a penalty for the violation thereof, providing for the manner of amending such code and providing when such code and this ordinance shall become effective. And this one, by point of order, will hold until our next meeting.
The reason I ask that is technically, we have not received a book form yet for the...
Yeah, raise that.
The book form has not actually hit City Hall, but it's en route, so technically, you need the code itself to adopt, so that's why we need to hold it until we get it, so we can do it next time. And the reason we're substituting what we did is I spoke to the code lawyer also, and we tweaked it just a little bit, and everybody got comfortable with it.
Thank you, and it holds by point of order. Councilman Argo?
Technically, since we're substituting it, it does not have to hold, but I'll make a motion that we hold it until our next meeting.
Okay. Motion to hold by Councilman Argo, is there a second?
Seconded.
Councilman Reniger, any discussion on the motion to hold? All in favor of the motion to hold signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution holds. The next item is a resolution to authorize the mayor to renew the audit for sales tax and business license contract with River Tree Systems Incorporated. Councilman Reniger, would you introduce this resolution?
Whereas the city of Prattville entered into an agreement with River Tree Systems Incorporated for performing certain auditing services, and whereas the city and River Tree Systems Incorporated desire to renew the agreement under which River Tree Systems Incorporated shall continue to provide services for the city, now therefore be it resolved that City Council of the city of Prattville, Alabama, does hereby authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with River Tree Systems Incorporated for auditing services for a three-year period. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Reniger. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Any discussion on this resolution? Councilman Reniger?
This question is for the mayor, if I may address the mayor. Mayor, is there a figure that we are agreeing to pay per year or per contract that should be in this resolution?
I'm going to refer to Doug Mosley on that, please.
Ms. Stewart, you want to just come down to the mic, please?
River Tree is not, it's only when we ask them to audit for somebody. It's not a fix, just an agreement, and it's per hour if we request it, only if we request it.
So, upon a request, in advance of the budget, we would have to pass a resolution to allow you to spend that money? Upon a request to use it, we would have to pass a resolution for you to spend that money?
Yes, sir.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Right. Any other questions? All in favor of Councilman Wood?
Just one question. That's been cost-effective.
Yes, sir.
Very much so.
Just last year, I believe, the amount that we just paid them was a little over $8,000 and the return was over $30,000.
Very good, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and this resolution passes. The next item is a resolution to authorize the release of funds to purchase sod from 231 Turf Market for the David D. Whitstone Sports Complex. Councilman Wood, would you introduce this resolution?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Whereas the city of Prattville provides baseball fields for public organized games and the fields are currently in need of maintenance, and whereas part of the needed repairs include the laying of sod, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Prattville that funds not to exceed $4,500 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to 231 Turf Market for sod and such payment is to be made from the general fund. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Wood. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Renninger. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Call for suspension of the rule.
By point of order, this one holds for two weeks unless there's a motion to suspend the rules. Councilman Wood has made such a motion. Do I hear a second for a suspension of the rules? Hearing none, this, the motion to suspend the rules fails and this resolution will hold until our next regularly scheduled meeting. Councilman Argo?
Before we leave this issue, I will not mind suspending the, or voting to second the motion to suspend the rules. And I know that has to be before us in order for me to ask a question, so I'm gonna second the motion to suspend the rules, to hopefully get it before so I can ask a question, but if it's, if it's, the rules are not suspended, then I'll be glad to discuss it at the next meeting. But I'll second Councilman Wood's motion to suspend the rules.
David, does it work that way?
I guess, I guess technically you said, seeing none, it failed, so.
The motion failed, so.
Yeah. I would, unfortunately, I think Mr. Argo was a little late.
Sorry, Mr. Argo.
I tried.
The next item is a resolution to authorize the purchase and installation of a current selector switch for a backup generator at a cost not to exceed $1,200. Councilman Argo, would you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the city of Prattville has a need to purchase and install a current selector switch for a backup generator for the wastewater department, and whereas said switch is available from Southern Generator Service at a cost of $1,200, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Prattville that said funds are hereby approved and appropriated and the switch and the installation is to be paid from the 2010, 2011 general fund. Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Argo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Any discussion on this resolution? Councilman Argo?
Mr. President, I move we suspend the rules.
This, the motion has been made to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of the motion to suspend the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and the rules are suspended. This resolution is now properly before us. Any further discussion on this resolution? All in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and this resolution passes. Item number seven is a resolution to amend Resolution Book 98B, page 144, authorizing the city to enter into agreements with the state of Alabama, acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation for transportation improvement grants. Councilman Wood, would you introduce this resolution, please? Seven.
Whereas the City Council of the city of Prattville adopted Resolution Book 98B, page 144, authorizing the city to enter into agreements with the state of Alabama, acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation for transportation improvement grants, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Prattville that Resolution Book 98B, page 144, is amended to authorize Thomas M. Miller, Council President Ann Baye Gillespie, Jr., Mayor, and all other necessary and proper representatives of the city are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver or attest a signature required on any document reasonably necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Renninger. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Councilman Renninger?
I'd like to have our city engineer, Mr. Anderson, come and explain to y'all the necessity of this. You may already understand it, but for those that are listening, perhaps next one.
Be happy to do that, Mr. Renninger. This is a basically housekeeping item. Whenever a grant comes and the council approves it, then the mayor has to execute it and there's been a change, obviously, in the mayor's position and the council president. This gets us current saying that the two names there are authorized to be the signers for the city of Prattville and that is a requirement that we put in the back of any agreement. Basically, the mayor would sign such agreement and then we would attach this resolution to the back saying that you guys have authorized him as a legal signature of the city of Prattville. So that's basically just to get the two proper names on the, on the resolutions, what this is for.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. All in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and this resolution passes. Is there anything to come from the floor?
Mr. President.
Councilman Bowles.
I would like to, to, how do I put this?
Introduce the resolution.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Prattville that Douglas C. Mosley be appointed as Acting Finance Director of the city of Prattville to act in such capacity effective immediately. Now therefore be it resolved that the Acting Finance Director shall not be required to post any bond or other surgery including with his service such as. I so move.
Moved by Councilman Bowles. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Mr. President, I move we suspend the rules.
Motion, motion by Councilman Argo to suspend the rules. Is there a second? Councilman Wood?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Okay, we will now vote on the motion to suspend the rules. All in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and the rules are suspended. This resolution is now properly before us. Is there any discussion on the resolution itself? Councilman Renninger?
David, is a, an action, an official action necessary on part of the council? I would say that this would be a day-to-day adjustment in personnel. It would just come under the mayor's authority. Can you explain why we have to pass a resolution for this?
I believe the finance director is appointed by y'all, just like I am, so it would, yeah.
Would this, would this also apply to an acting finance director?
I'm sorry, I don't understand, Councilman Renninger.
Says that we are approving or appointing as an acting finance director. Now I could understand if we were appointing him as the finance director, but is legislation necessary to appoint an acting finance director?
Well, I don't think you have any procedures in place so that the deputy immediately goes to the acting finance director, so my opinion is yes.
Well, I just need clarification. Thank you.
That was all. Councilman Renninger, Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. Under, under the city council and the city employees' policies and procedures, the mayor does have the authority to make an interim appointment to last a certain amount of time before the council would have to either vote to do exactly as the mayor said or to restore it to the way that it was originally placed. And I understand Councilman Renninger's question very well. While the mayor does not need the authority or the action of the council to move Mr. Mosley to the acting or the interim directors, finance director's position, I feel better if we all do this in concert so that it's very clear to the public that this is something that the mayor and the council are acting in concert and moving forward with. But Mr. Renninger is exactly right. According to policies and procedures, it does not require action except if it exceeds a certain amount of time.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion? Okay. All in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and this resolution passes. Congratulations, I think, Mr. Mosley. Is there anything else to come from the floor? Councilman Renninger?
Chair, I move that we go into executive session.
A motion to go into executive session, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. This is based on, as I said at the outset, pending possible litigation, so any?
One privilege, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Wood?
Can we finish this agenda and then, I mean, get final remarks and that way we won't have to come back?
To come back? Yeah, that's actually a good idea, so.
Shall I rescind my motion?
We didn't vote on it, so. So if the motion is on the floor. Okay. Yes, if you could.
I rescind the motion.
Councilman Renninger rescinds his motion, so, and I don't think it got a second. Did it? You rescind your second, okay. Okay, so what was the mayor? Okay. Comments from the mayor? Any closing comments?
The way my throat is tonight, no.
Thank you. Councilman Wood?
Yes, I just want to thank all the employees for what they're doing, especially the people that's stepping up to the plate. We're in some serious times. I got appointed to the finance committee, I don't know why they did it, but I guess for punishment, I reckon. But anyway, I appreciate it. We're working diligently and I'm speaking as a representative of the finance committee. On my behalf, we're working diligently and I appreciate everything that you all are trying to do and, and just keep us in prayer and we're moving forward and I thank you very much for what you're doing. Thanks.
Councilman Argo?
Mr. President, members of the council, I want to reiterate what Mr. Wood has said, having served on the finance committee for a little over 14 years and I know what you're going through, I know what the finance committee is having to deal with and I commend you and I also am praying for all three of you and for the mayor as you deal with these difficult situations. But I also would like to say thank you to the city employees as well. It's often difficult to do your job, especially when, when citizens are asking you questions daily, your families asking you questions daily. What's gonna happen? What are they gonna do? How much money do we have? All the other questions that go along and, and so I commend you for continuing to do what you do best and that is providing services to the city of Prattville. And I also, Mr. President, like to take this opportunity to wish Councilman Renninger a belated birthday. I failed to do that yesterday and I am remiss in doing that, but I do it tonight. Happy birthday, my friend.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Councilman Renninger?
Well, first of all, I want to answer, answer Mr. Wood's question, why he was appointed to the finance committee. It's because he's been on the city council since Moses was found in the bull rushes. And a little-known fact, your council president, Dr. Tom Miller, has spent hundreds of hours on the budget and he is to be commended for his outstanding efforts. And we are coming to a conclusion. It may not be pretty, but it's workable and we're gonna get ourselves out of this just as quickly as we can.
Thank you, Councilman Renninger. Councilman Bowles?
And I guess I would say that I likewise, you know, would like to voice my appreciation to not only the mayor. It's, it's wonderful to see your leadership and you're diving right in and just trying to learn as much as you can, as quick as you can. And I know you've shared with me that you've already had meetings with more people than I can count, you know, across the community and even the river region and I can't tell you how much I appreciate your leadership and, and the road that we've embarked on. We have had a lot of change when you stop and reflect, you know, starting with, with Councilman Argo's resignation from the presidency and that change and then the, the change with the mayor's seat, with Mayor Byard's departure and our new mayor and now we've got, you know, the District One vacancy to fill. There's been a lot of stuff going on all at one time and it sometimes seems overwhelming. But, you know, the test of leadership is standing tall and getting the job done and, and not stopping until you get there, till you, till you reach the goal. And I think we're on a track to, to get there in the very near future. I do want to also echo the thanks to the city employees. These folks work a lot of long, hard hours and they are what makes the city what it is. And I, you know, I left this morning and it was right when the garbage truck was going by, I mean, smiling faces and waves and just upbeat attitude and, and I mean, just one more snapshot of what it's all about, delivering services to the citizens every day, rain or shine. So I just want to echo the sentiments of fellow councilmen and the mayor about how much we do appreciate that. I neglected to say at the outset, when I was talking about the plan for filling the District One vacancy, I left off one other piece. After we have February 8th, the sort of marathon of the presentations, we are not going to vote that night. We actually are going to vote on the, the selection at the following council meeting, which will be February 15th. So I think there might have been an error, Marty, in the, what was in the paper today, but we're not gonna vote the same night that we have the interviews. That will come at the February 15th regular council meeting. So with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn? To, motion to go in, again, to go into executive.
Executive session.
Motion to go into executive section, session, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. We will now go into executive session.